Seven oh five. Do I do the roll call, Rob?
Sure. Ms. Bakora. Ms. Geary's excuse, Ms. Mance.
Here.
Mr. Conyer. Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Proctor. Excuse. Ms. Lanzetta. Mr. Calamano.
Here.
Mr. Bogus.
Here.
This, Mr. Wilken.
Here.
Here, Tom.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Baden.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Levity not with us yet. Ms. Walton.
No power.
I know. Ms. Walton? No. Mr. Watkins. Mr. Onquist. Wow.
Frank's here.
Frank's here.
Oh, Frank's here? Here.
Thank you, Frank.
Mr. Markwood.
Here.
Mr. Rudikoff.
Here.
Ms. Weiner. Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Mr. Gagarty.
Here.
Anybody come in after I start a roll call?
You got Mr. Watkins just came in.
Yes, I just came in.
All right, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Welcome.
All right. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept them.
McLaughlin.
Second. Second, Mr. Markowitz. All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody not approving the minutes? Any absentees? Okay. Minutes approved, moving on to item three, education training opportunities.
Um.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Sure, thank you. Two things, one is is that we did have a meeting, a seminar on density and protecting rural character. It was last week. I hope most of you attended. It was very well received and it is now up on YouTube, Rob.
Correct.
And so you can watch that on YouTube and if you do, and self-certify, we'll count that as, we'll count that as training. I think it's about an hour and a half.
About two hours.
The commercials, without the commercial interruptions. So if anybody didn't attend, Marianne, I think, is sending that link out or she sent it out this afternoon.
Yeah.
I thought we weren't going to self-certify, okay.
Yeah, we, we are, if they haven't, if they didn't attend, Rob, and they want to watch it, the board members want to watch it and self-certify, they, they certainly can.
Dennis or Rob, what, what was the software that he was using for that, the polling questions? I thought it was really, it worked really well.
Yeah, absolutely. It metrics, metrics or something, I forget what it was called.
It was, uh, let's see.
Metar, Metarix or something? But it's a.
Metameter.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
Is it a pay software or is it a free software, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's Metameter, I brought it down.
Metameter, that's correct, thank you.
Thank you, I'm just gonna look into it, I thought it was really, it worked very, very well.
Yeah, and we are too, I thought that was a, and it, and it works, it actually, I think, works quite well for a Zoom meeting because, you know, you get your results most instantaneously and you're not having to, it, we did a lot of comparisons in a very short period of time.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it was, it was very useful.
I thought that actually worked better than a, than a in-person meeting, to be honest with you. I was, I was very impressed and we sent a boatload of thank yous to Barton La Judas. If the board members that attended would want to send me an email about how good it was or how they hated it, one of the two will pass them on as well. But that's, that was a real good seminar and they've offered to come back. We had some discussions about other topics as well, so I think we'll probably do one prior to Christmas.
Oh, outstanding. No, they were good.
Dennis, this is Tom Wilken. Uh, I did think it was really good and I did like that polling. I thought it was going to be a little bit vast or more for urban centers, but it was really good, basic training for all board members, I think, right down on the lower levels.
And he was just a great presenter, I, regardless of the topic, he, he can present well.
I thought, I thought that polling was going to be kind of a joke at first, but wanting, but I did, uh, I did use my phone, I had, I had it on my tablet and I mirrored it to my TV and I took the snapshot off the TV and it went, the smartphone went right to the website and it was remarkable how it went and the amount of data that you could get from that.
Yeah, it was pretty cool. It was pretty cool.
Dennis Rochester, well, we had planned to stream it, we have a zoning review committee who was scheduled to meet that night. So we planned to stream it into the meeting, but then thanks to Spectrum, we lost internet in the town of Rochester until six o'clock that night. But, um, so we had already canceled the meeting, but almost all the members signed on independently, so it was very timely for us.
I'm glad to hear that, Mike, really glad to hear that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put the link into the chat to that Mentimeter, by the way.
Thanks, Robert. Any, um, I'm sorry, I probably stepped in, Mike, on that was on that education and training, I apologize.
No, that was our problem, but, um, I think Marianne also sent down another training opportunity today also. So, um.
I forgot, I know I told her to send something out, I forgot what it was.
Uh, Planning Federation.
That's what, yep, thank you.
Yep. So, um. I, like I always say, if, if most of the members have their training credits, take a look at your alternate and, um, just make sure that they have their training credits and I, and let them know of opportunities to, for doing, for doing some of this. Okay, anything else on educational training? Jump into community reports, does anybody have any community reports?
Yeah, town of Rochester, Dennis and, and Mike will be forwarding an alternate name to the board. After searching for almost two years to find an alternate for myself, finally found somebody willing to step up. One of our town board members who used to be on the ZBA has stepped up, so I'll be, uh, I'll be forwarding her name to, uh, to you, Dennis, and then to the, to the legislature.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else on community reports?
Yeah, Vince McLaughlin here, I'm sorry.
Wait, Vince.
The areas in the village of Sorries where they were dug up this year, when Central Hudson did the pipeline project there for the new gas means. Those areas have been totally repaved over and the village of Sorries wants to thank everybody for their patience throughout the whole project. They did a very, very nice job and everything worked out well.
Okay. Every once in a while, we like a good positive one. Anything else on community reports?
Yeah, Mike, this is Drew. I had mentioned earlier in the year, the rehabilitation of the Bushkill Stream and doing work under the bridge and re-aligning the Bushkill Stream, that work has now been complete. I don't know what the final cost was, but somewhere around a million dollars. And Dennis, there was a 200,000 in the capital budget for the county do it, providing some inspection, but I believe because the bidding came in under that that money was not used at the county level, we used the extra money we had available to veto that.
Great news, that's really great news, so you actually had enough money in the, in the stream, in the, in the award that you didn't need any, any additional money from the county?
Yeah, that, Mike, this, I'm gonna give you numbers that are rough, I think we had roughly 1.2 million available to us from the state. The bids came in somewhere around 900,000. So when the whole COVID thing hit and county was looking for ways to not spend money, I think, um, they reached out to, to the people involved in this and I think that that was an agreement, they would, it would pick up the 200,000. Whether that actually happened or not, I don't know for sure.
No, that's great, um, that, well, that's, that's really wonderful, I know we put it, we put it in the capital, in the capital program that we would pay you for the work. Um, it wasn't, it was originally decided to do it on the basis of, um, of inspection and then we, we looked at it, we said we can bond it on the basis of the improvements that you were making to the county road and county bridge.
Right.
So it wasn't tied to inspection, but as long as you had enough money to cover it for state money, that's, that's a good savings, thanks for that, Bert, Drew.
And a couple of other things, um, we had done some engineering work on a couple of culverts, I'll call them, on an upper, upper Boyceville Road, I believe that one is finished, if not, it's essentially finished. And then another, or the, now they're coming into construction of that. Um, and the other one is right off of Route 28 to Silver Road. That's kind of a culvert there that's not in great shape, so that one's in the process of being replaced. And these are all being paid for pretty much by the Shokan Water Stream Management Group. I think that's it for Mike Town.
Okay, thanks, Drew. Anybody else?
Can I ask Drew a question, Mike?
Sure.
What's going on in Boyceville, Drew, you, you had updated us the last time about the taking for those properties for flood?
Uh, yes, um. I talked to the lawyer, Tim Cox of CWC, um, late last week, I happened to see him at a meeting. I know the bids are in, I was asking him if they got reasonable bids and whether, when, when the buildings will be taken down. I guess there is, he said, all he said to me was there's an issue with the apparent low bidder. So they haven't really, um, awarded the contracts yet. But I'm still under the impression that, that the intent is to remove those buildings before winter.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And, um, one, one more thing on that, because next Tuesday at our town board meeting, the Maverick Health Center is asked to also be part of that flood buyout. There's gonna be a resolution before the town board on Tuesday to allow them to proceed with that if they wish.
Thanks, Drew, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? An item five, planning board reports. In your package was a membership whose terms are coming up the end of this year. And, um, so I just asked you to take a look at it. If you're into, um, staying on, let your town board know so they can do the reappointment. And if not, make sure you have somebody to replace you.
Yeah.
Going forward on it, but, um, we got a handful there and I just want to make, make it aware of it because I'll take on it right soon because it takes a while for the legislature to approve somebody new.
Mike, I, I made my supervisor aware of that today for myself and Helene Grant as alternate. So there'll be a resolution on our board mem, board meeting next Tuesday to reappoint myself and Helene Grant as alternate.
Uh, that's great.
I'll get going, moving, because I know the legislature takes a little while.
This is Chair, maybe my board where as well. I do have a question though. What if you're no longer, if it hasn't been approved at this point in time? And it comes up for the next terms for Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary, what happens then, Dennis?
So, um, a couple of things you should know, one is, is that the decision of terms of Chair, Vice Chair is dependent upon the board, obviously. But your ability to serve under uniform procedure law, uniform procedure law allows you to continue to serve until replaced. So either you're reappointed or replaced, one of the two. So you can continue to serve and you're a valid board member until you're replaced or you're reappointed. Does that help, Chair?
Thank you.
So one of the things I would say is, is that I signed letters this afternoon. So all of the towns where there's membership expiring will get a letter from the, from the, uh, the, the department explaining the term and setting the process for reappointment in place so that they know what to do. So don't be surprised if your supervisor gets a letter indicating, or I think we may have sent to the town clerk, I'm not sure, indicating the, indicating that your term has expired if you're on this list.
Yeah, with Drew and I being involved, I thought it was important to find out.
Yeah. And then, just so you know, one of the first names on the list is Linda Geary, whose term ends this, this December. Linda has indicated in an email to us that she has, she will resign at the end of her term. So we have a, one, there'll be some different letters that go out and basically indicating that for Linda's case that they needed, they need both a, a, a new member as well as an alternate member.
Dennis, Mike, Mike Baden, did, uh, I saw that the city of Kingston's person doesn't expire till the end of next year, but we, we believe that person has moved out of the jurisdiction, so is a letter being sent to the mayor to alert him of that fact as well?
I think we, that's a good question, Mike, I don't recall seeing that name, but I recall having a conversation with the mayor about this. We should send a letter and just indicate that the board member hasn't been attended.
Right. Thank you.
Didn't we have Watkins here, didn't we have something in place that the board could take somebody off if they didn't come to so many meetings?
The board, the board can't, but the legislature can.
Okay.
The city should be aware that he moved out because he also serves on the city's ZBA.
Mark, the, the board can send a letter to the legislature, making them aware of it. And I, I actually, back when I was Chair, had drafted one, but we opted not to send it at that time. It was, I can't remember who the member was or what town it was, but there was one member that we hadn't seen in years and, and I do remember that we drafted a letter and then chose not to send it, but.
That was the city of Kingston.
It was the city of Kingston.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what I was referring to, I thought that, but I thought that because of the non-participancy into the board, that we had the right to do something like that.
Yeah, we can, we can recommend the legislature, but we can't, we can't remove somebody. The city had, the city had recommended another member, which was, which was Brad Will. Um, and that individual ran into, um, some heated discussions at the legislative level, um, relative to his serving on the county planning board and he withdrew his name, uh, even though it was put forth by the mayor. So the city has tried to fill a vacancy, um, but, um, in many instances, uh, I, for some reason, there was a response that was less than favorable to his name at the legislative level.
Dennis, do we need to take a vote at the board to send that letter or can the chair just do it?
I, I would, I would think that, let's see if the city, the city is willing to have a conversation about appointing someone else, I'll have that conversation with the mayor. And then, no one would indicate, not a problem if, if that's the case, that we would basically have the legislature on, in the same, in the same resolution that would appoint would basically remove Mr. Bonavita. So we would do it two birds and one stone. If that's okay with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Good. Okay. That's all I had on, um, reports at this time. Picking up on, uh, planning department, Dennis?
Just on the committee reports, Mike, um, just want to remind the board that coming up, you're going to need a, you're going to need a nomination committee for the November meeting.
Do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, for, that's what I was gonna say, for the November, November meeting, I just want to put that in mind, if anybody wants to volunteer, now would be a great time.
I'll do it.
So it's the chairman's choice, but just, just so you know, the chairman should make the chairman aware, if there's any, if there's any volunteers. So planning department reports, financial report, just quickly, um, the, the county executive put forth is 2021 budget. There are some highlights in that budget was it's about a $333 million budget. Uh, there are no tax increases proposed for that budget and there are no layoffs proposed for that budget, just so you know. So it was a, it was, the budget was well received, there's a couple of, um, he's been able to essentially move into the capital realm and implement a number of his programs, his big five programs in terms of Green New Deal, in terms of environmental justice. And in terms of, in terms of the opioid crisis, he used some savings from, um, the, the jail, um, in terms of the number of people that he needs in the jail because of the jail population being down. He used some of those savings to create a, an increase in the funding for his mobile opioid and mental health, I'm sorry, mental health, not opioid, mental health, uh, services to increase those mental health services, so he used that, some of that money there. There are really no other major new initiatives within the operating budget, uh, but there are new initiatives within the capital budget. Two of the new initiatives in the cash, in the capital budget came from the planning department. One of those new initiatives is a community development fund. It replaces and expands upon the shovel-ready fund and it, and it provides for additional funding for other things that were not normally eligible under the shovel-ready fund. We have to be able to fund them under county purpose, they have to meet a county purpose, first of all, and, and A and B is they have to be bondable. Uh, but it does give some opportunity for other types of projects to be considered as community development projects. The second piece of that is that we initiated a project on access, broadband access, what they call wireless broadband access. And so that's funded with a feasibility study in 2021, not a lot of money and hopefully moving towards some implementation. And what we're looking at for that type of implementation is what they call fixed wireless service. Particularly in the rural areas and Mike Bodden knows about this because we've been, we're looking at the Rochester area as well. Thing would, would be to start to take a look at fixed wireless service in these areas and we're also engaged in a discussion with our IS people to see if the county backbone service, which has a greatly expanded backbone service because of the COVID issue. County purchased a significant gig service and to serve a lot of its buildings. Whether that backbone service can be used to offer wireless in and around its buildings. And also that the county is going to explore what they call point-to-point wireless services from those backbone services. So that when we go out and look at our rental properties, we're not installing a substantial amount of, of broadband infrastructure in our rental properties and then it gets left behind when we move out. So those are the two new things in the capital program. I will send the board the capital program, uh, you can download it, it's online, I think, Rob, did you send the link out? Did we lose Rob?
Done mute.
Okay. But, um, and I will send it out, remember, we would be looking for comments to come back at the November meeting. So that we can consider those comments for adoption and submitted to the legislature and the county executive in November rather than as soon as possible. That's all I've got.
Dennis, you wanted me to talk about agricultural district one?
No, I, I'll, I'm gonna get there, um, I will, Bert, thank you, we'll do that under special topics if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, so environmental notice, Bolton, I just want to note that there is a positive deck in New Paltz on a tower facility on Jansen Road. And, um, from a communication standpoint, they're there, I don't have anything to talk about. With respect to the communications that we've received. And then director and staff reports, Bert, if you want to go at the director and staff reports, you can talk about the, uh, the Ag District now.
Okay, um, agricultural district one is undergoing its review. And that includes the Sopis, Lloyd, Marlborough, half of Plattekill and half of the town of New Paltz. And in November, mid to late November, it'll be a 30-day period where, um, a town could, you know, offer up parcels it would like to see removed uh, from the, um, the agricultural district, it's ultimately up to the legislature to pass the resolution. But, uh, and would get certified by Ag and Markets, but that review is, is going on right now, so. And it'll end sometime in the spring, early summer of next year.
So the other, the other thing, and we'll, we'll send out a notice to the board, is that the county has a, in a housing committee that is in the process of preparing a, a housing action plan. County planning department has spearheaded that work with the county exec, with Dr. Evelyn Wright from the county executive's office. There will be a, a public meeting on that plan, a Zoom meeting on the 15th, am I right, Robert?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, on the 15th at seven o'clock, we can send those links out to you and you can register on our website for that as well.
Six thirty, Dennis.
Six thirty, I'm sorry, thank you. And, and we're, we're going to be discussing that, what I would call the, you know, what is a housing action plan? What are the income levels, what are the challenges to, to housing right now in Ulster County and it's, and it's, it's municipal based, so we're gonna have a lot of municipal data that probably most of you have never seen before. That's gonna get discussed and then what are some of the solutions that are out there that, that, that you, that you can offer? That sort of makes some sense in terms of, um, making sure that we have a diversified housing base that can meet, that can meet community needs. So that's on six thirty on the 15th of October and we'll send that link out so that you have it and you can register to, you can register to attend. Any questions?
I'll share that link.
Dennis, had a question on another topic, if you, if you're moving on.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, um, I'm curious, I've been following the, the UCRRA and the legislature appear to have a bit of a battle going on about lead agency on the, the county's, uh, uh, waste management plan. And was curious, does the planning department play any role in, in those discussions in any way or have you?
On a peripheral basis, we basically took a look at what the RRA has done with respect to the, the environmental work or not done would be probably more accurate. But we haven't, we haven't advised the legislature directly, we've been talking through the attorney's office and through the executive's office with respect to this. Just so you know, what ended up happening is, is there's a solid waste action plan that gets, uh, that the, is required to be updated every five years. The statute basically says that, that, that in addition to the RRA and DEC, which has an approval authority on the plan, that they're required to receive letters from other parties that are, that are parties to the plan. And then that's the way the statute reads, I recall it's parties. And the county is a party to, is a party to the plan. So they need a, a sort of a resolution that basically says that the legislature also approves of the plan and there's been a tussle back and forth with respect to whether or not, um, zero waste is not specifically included in the plan and there's a number of individuals on the environmental committee that want to essentially gravitate towards zero waste as soon as possible. So that's become a point of contention with respect to the RRA and the legislature. It wasn't helped by the fact that the RRA essentially, in the same resolution declared itself lead agency and issued a negative declaration. And part of that had to do with our Department of Environment in looking at the resolution and then having conversations with the RRA said, you know, this is a major policy plan. It's required to, we think it's required to do the State Environmental Quality Review Act findings for it. And nobody had done it, including the fact that the Department of Environmental Conservation had never indicated that one would be done and they have in point of fact approved the plan contingent upon essentially these letters from the other parties. So it's created a bit of a brouhaha, not only at the local level, but certainly at the state level, say, how can, how, they're, they're trying to find. So it's created a bit of a brouhaha, not only at the local level, but certainly at the state level to say, how can how they're they're trying to find a way. Then that DEC doesn't doesn't essentially have approval power. So that the and in engaged in that discussion have now come the legislature, which. Has, I think, walked back the lead agency comments. But it's clearly continuing to push the RRA relative to. The necessary things it should do in order to get their approval. And we've cautioned, I think, both. Both of the legislature, both the Department of Environment and and the planning department has cautioned. Those folks that are advising the legislature that if the legislature is going to go ahead and adopt this resolution, it shouldn't make the same mistake that the. RRA did. It should cite the factors under the statute. Cite the things in the plan that would that were are clearly consistent with environmental protection and then make its determination. But we're not sure where the legislature is going to go, whether it's going to essentially move ahead. Whether it's going to challenge, whether it's going to. Try to use additional leverage to influence the RRA's decision. Just haven't been privy to those discussions.
Well, it is. It is on their agenda for the 20th, so I didn't know.
One of the resolutions I think got withdrawn. There were two, and I think there was a lead agency resolution and there was a resolution in support.
Yeah, it was a lead agency resolution.
The lead agency resolution, I believe, was withdrawn. I I can't speak to that for sure, but I believe I heard it was withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, Dennis?
Yes.
This is Victor Markowitz. Dennis. This, what just what what date was this legislative meeting about the lead agency? What the for the.
It will be on the next legislative meeting, which is next Tuesday, I think, as I recall.
It's the 20th, Dennis.
It's the 20th. That's correct. Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Two Tuesdays away.
I'm a week ahead of myself.
Have they they seem to have like had like six? Six sites in the town were worsening for the. Like fees were for the landfill, you know. Have they looked at any other sites in the county?
I can't speak to that, Victor. You really need to, you know, really need to to delve into what the. You know, this, what the and there was a plan to take a look at other sites and landfills, but that's not what this is about. This is literally about the. The solid waste action plan, which is much broader than a landfill site.
Oh, that's that's the that's the, I don't know, the beginning. The beginning, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, the beginning, the first, the initial plan.
Now, this is this covers everything from recycling to waste reduction to composting. To, you know, single single stream versus multiple stream. It covers a a whole host of things, including where waste is disposed of.
Victor, if Mike Baden, if I could answer your you. There was one member of the UCRRA board who created all or developed all these sites based on. Strictly on one criteria only, and that was on acreage. And they picked it around, but they haven't done anything with it. I don't know if it's still in further discussion. So if that's what you're speaking about. It's it's just sort of in one one member of five's mind right now, so.
So that's that's it for me, folks.
Okay, okay. Robbie, any public?
Yes, we do.
We can open up for public comment?
Sure, if anybody from public would like to speak, raise your hand, we'll let you talk.
Hey, Robbie, can you finally hear me?
Yeah, I only just saw you in the panelist section. You joined through the wrong link, I guess, so. So, yeah, so now I added you to the panel, John.
We got you, John.
I just wanted to let you know that I was here. I've been listening to you for the last. 10, 15 minutes, but no picture, no nothing.
Right, but you you joined as you joined through the main planning. Board link, not through your panelist email.
We're good, John. We got we got you now.
Any hands up, Rob?
Nope. All right.
All right, we'll close off the public comment and. Jump into the zoning referrals.
That sounds like a plan.
I just ask everybody if you're not speaking, try to mute yourself so I don't have any background and. All right, so Garner's up first, Mike.
All right, now Garner, any recusals?
Hang on, let's see, somebody just.
John's on.
Yeah, 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 I gotta recuse myself. Is this Hess?
Yes, it's Hess.
Gardner Hess?
Hess, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta recuse myself.
Okay, so we have one recusal, Gio.
Right, one second. I think actually somebody did try to do public comment, but they didn't know how to do it right, so let me.
Okay.
Patty Brooks, probably.
John Avonkovich. I'll, if if you want to speak, raise your hand in the.
Rob, it's also my, I got put it off. I had to sign back in.
All right, well, okay, this is public comment here.
Hey, Rob.
Hello.
Hi, how are you, Rob?
I'm good.
I'm just out here, it's watching. You hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Did you have a public comment?
Nope, I just wanted to see if I. Just testing this Zoom thing. Sorry about that.
Oh, sorry. Okay, actually, we did have one. Patty Brooks did want to actually speak.
John's the backup for Rosendale.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Patty.
Okay, this actually is with regard to the town of Lloyd proposed regulations for the planned residential retirement district. I do know that you received an email letter from John First from Catania Mann and Ryder this afternoon. Just wanted to say we really appreciated all the Ulster County Planning Board comments back to the town of Lloyd. We look forward to continuing to work with the town of Lloyd and one of the county planning board to see. A copy of the comments which we are forwarding to the town. But again, we appreciate all your previous comments to the town and we look forward to continuing to work with the municipality. Towards a new district and regulations there with that will work for all of the residents of the community. So. Just wanted to send along those thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Hey, okay, anything else up, Rob?
Let me just check. I have one more hand up here. You're on again, Mr. Avonkovich.
He's got himself mute.
Oh, sorry. So sorry, I didn't have a hand up, but should maybe I should take it off. Here, am I off?
Yeah, you are now. Okay, moving on, Garner.
Garner, any recusals? Hey, Gio is the only one recusing.
All right, let me share my let me share my screen and we'll get it away.
Yes, I'm recused.
Let me share my screen. We'll be underway. There we go. All right. All right, so town of Garner, it's a two lots subdivision, usually not required to be referred, but town of Garner hasn't signed an exception agreement. It's for one. Five acre buildable lot off of basically 70 yard acre remainder, which is in conservation. So it's off Sand Hill Road. This is the one lot that's being pulled off for five acres. The rest is still in the ag district. Still can be used for agriculture. There's no county impact on a two lot subdivision.
It's almost.
Second, Mike Baden.
All right, we have a. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. City of Kingston. Any recusals?
All right, City Kingston, this is Green Hill Avenue. We reviewed it for use variance last month or month before. Use variance was granted. It's located right on Green Hill Avenue at this existing site. This is the Boys and Girls Club right here. If you recall, they're going to expand this building, put some parking in and have some. It's an education center and let's see, what do they call it? Community center and training facility. So here's, let me go back to the site plan here. Here we go. All right, so this is the site plan. Like I said, they have some parking reserved. They needed additional parking. Parking's on the side. Existing building and they're expanding all in the back, so you won't see it from the street. Plus, there's handicap accessible car parking. Things you don't see on the site plan. There will be some light hours involved with this project, so there's no lighting. In the parking lots, we'd make that a comment. Also, it's going to have a lot of school age. And it's in an urban environment, so we'd like to see a bike rack as an advisory comment at this location. This is what it's going to look like. So. Barn kind of, actually more of a, what's the word I'm looking for? And so parking lot lighting is required modification, landscaping, street trees, lawn fringes advisory and bike rack is another advisory comment.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second, Watkins.
Rob, Mike Baden, quick question on it. Is the parking going to be limited to only to their hour to their use? Or is it going to be opened up for other community parking?
I mean, it should be for only that that site.
Okay.
I mean, it's associated with the Boys and Girls Clubs. I don't know if they'll overflow into there, but.
Okay.
It should, in theory, be only for that one.
My concern is that it will become neighborhood parking and not be accessible by the club, so that's why I asked that question.
Yeah, it wasn't. It's related. It's in theory related to the use. But it shouldn't be public parking. It's for that site. It's not a public parking lot.
Okay, any other further comments? We have a motion and a second. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, motion carried. Town Lloyd, any recusals? Thanks, Scott.
We had one recused at the last minute today, so that's why it was still in the presentation. Withdrawn, I should say. Town Lloyd, local law B. So this is a revised version of local law which relate to the planned. Retirement residential district and the highway business district that we saw a couple of months back. And what the town's done is they've come back, met us halfway a lot of of the. Comments that we've made and they made some good progress on this proposed local law. And I'll take you through it. So. I I have a breakdown of all the slides, but what I'm going to actually go to is my my advisory comments, which sum it up much more succinctly. Okay, so you'll recall last time we first section will be retirement communities. The second slide will be about the highway. First slide, we talked about, we made a comment that it should be a special permit process rather than overlay district or a pud kind of district. The town still prefers the planned residential retirement district, planned retirement residential district. And it's just some comments. We thought it was better to go still through special permit, but make an advisory comment. We felt that the need to do a concept plan could also be accomplished by doing going through sketch plan review at the planning board level. Didn't necessarily need town board to do concept based because of the utility of sketch plan review. Special permits by their nature take into account surrounding neighborhood context and comprehension of plan.
The thought being, Rob, that you would go through sketch plan. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I apologize.
No, keep going.
You would go through sketch plan review at the at the at the planning at the planning level. They would then come to a sketch plan that they're they're comfortable with and pass it on to the town board for consideration. Is that what you're thinking?
No, because we were our our count was special permit, not having the town board involved at all, not doing the PRD.
All right, I thought that that we're I thought we were handling it that, you know, planning boards are much more comfortable going through concept and sketch plan review and. They could they could send it to the town board. Are you okay if we do it that way?
We can suggest it both ways.
That's what I'm thinking. Let's let's make that suggestion that that. The planning department be involved in the in the in the sketch plan or or concept plan stage. And then that could go to the town board. Let's let's make let's think I that makes a lot of sense to me. I thought that's what we were talking about. I apologize.
That wasn't the original comment.
Yeah, I know. I know that's not our original comment, but you know, the idea that we're we're advisory comments now, that's one of the ways that you you could think about it. Okay.
And I just felt that this is a special permit process rather than PRD was more efficient and also released some more predictable outcomes. Given that you have certain standards that you have to fulfill and meet, and that's the long and short of it, rather than going through the town board. Affordable housing, they revised it. We asked them to make note of their affordable housing section of their statute. That's now in there, so no issue with that. Parking setbacks and building setbacks. There were 100 feet previously, if you recall, now they're 50 feet. So, A, we recommend that there be waiver provisions for planning board under special permit. To look at different setbacks with an encouragement to look towards. Moving buildings toward the front of road if possible, with parking on the side and rear. And also. Yeah, that was basically it.
We had design guidelines as well, right? And then, if I if I can, one more time, Rob, and I know that, you know. So the waiver provisions, I want the board to think about it this way. If we're if we're going through a zoning change, a zoning amendment. And it has a concept plan or a sketch plan associated with it, the waiver provisions could be either either or. It could be either under the planning board being granted the waiver. Or the town board in in looking at the concept plan could could, you know, essentially say. The given the fact that this is a great concept plan, we like this as in and no waiver would be needed and. That that's a that's the point I wanted to make, Rob, is is that the waiver provisions should be. Noted in the statute that essentially who exercises them could be either the town board or the planning board. That's what I wanted to to note.
Okay. Density, they recognize that most retirement communities and. Complexes of this nature are even found already in the town are 12 units per two 12 rooms per acre, not the eight rooms per acre. So and they're going to require clustering, so that's we're okay with that. We're happy to see that change. Also, they left in the local roads. They said that. In the original, they said it could be had to have direct access to state or county or new or new roads that made. Town standards. We didn't see why they should exclude existing local roads as long as they met town standards as well. Make that as a advisory comment. Also, the other thing was the it is sunset closed originally of 18 months. We felt that was a little short, given the financing and. The the overall project length of these types of projects that we now they made it two years with two different one year extensions that. The applicant can apply for, so we're happy to see that change. Moving on to highway business district. They changed your set, if you recall, setback for was 60 feet. Now it's 35 feet with setbacks with screening. And also all the other setbacks require screening as well for the for the PRD above. Just one comment we like to make is that they should have design standards, look at their access management, shared access, parking rear. They should be looking to avoid strip commercial, not just have 35 setbacks and. Again, look at waivers depending on the site. Maximum building coverage went from 30 to 40%. Most of the sites don't have water sewer in the district. That's okay. That's why they have adequate room for their septic and 100% reserve areas. And density, this is a big one. Originally, they only said 30% of the upper floor could be apartments. Now it's one to one 50 50. And then we again, we would actually recommend that they do waivers. So if they wanted to go beyond two floors. Be go to three floors. This way they could keep it so that the upper floors could all be. Apartments if they wanted to pursue a waiver that way. So those are the advisory comments.
So we have something else to say, which is is that. I think from the community's response to it. I think from the community's response to it, I mean, the county planning board's initial response to this proposed local law was, you know, was not favorable in any way, shape or form. And we would want to, in response to this, in response to what we've seen from the community, which is a really concerted effort to to look at the county planning board's response and to find out why that we sat down and met with them to find out why that response was there and what was an appropriate way that they could address that what the county planning board was 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 recommending while still essentially making sure they had some local concerns that they needed to address. We think that this is literally the best of, the best way to to approach a local, a significant county concern about about making sure that we could get density and we could get these projects built. If they, if they, if they warranted, and it wasn't any specific sort of block within the statute that would not allow them to go forward. And in the community reaching out and saying, we think we can do that. And then the second piece is allowing us to reach back to the community and say, we get the fact that you have certain local considerations that you want to make sure are appropriate and in and they're not, don't rise to a county concern. And therefore, we're going to hold on some of these issues, particularly on the special permit versus the PR versus the PRDD process. So I, I think it, I think that the town should be commended for that. And I think the board itself here should be commended for taking a hard look at this and making the the original recommendations for the required modifications.
Concerned about the thirty five foot setback in the highway business district, or do you think that that serves it okay?
It's not an unusual setback. If you go through, you know what I'm saying? Go look elsewhere. It's not an unusual setback. So the short answer is no.
And also, that's why we said waivers. They they can take a look. If they provide adequate waivers, they can look some more site by site and say, you know, it's more appropriate to design this way and not have a thirty five foot waiver if they find that site's appropriate to do that.
Okay.
Motion to support staff, second McLaughlin.
That was Mr. Watkins at the first, I thought.
Yes. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carried. Marble Town, any recusals? Okay. We're going to do them together.
Yes, please. Alright, this is Cripple Bush Road. It's a proposed one point eight megawatt community solar farm. It is in an ag district. And they have existing access off of Cripple Bush Road, which is a county route. It's this, let me just show you which parcel is. So it's this parcel here. And it's going to be in the northeastern quadrant of the property. There are prime soils on this property, but Town Marble Town is very specific in which prime soils you cannot build on. And none of those four soil types can be found at this location. So there's nothing preventing it from an ag or soil limitation to putting a solar farm on this particular parcel. Let me go to the site plan.
So Rob, I'm sorry, go ahead. Keep going.
You go ahead.
I just wanted to show where the where the historic district was, but that's
I can go back to the area. You want to see it?
Yeah.
Okay, one sec. Alright, Chippewa did have a no adverse impacts letter.
So the historic district runs through this area right through here and down and around and then out through here.
I can't.
So the historic district is in there. There is a state designated historic district in that, in that location. Just so everybody knows, we have a conversation about when we have a conversation about the Chippewa comments.
So they said they got a letter, no adverse impact on this back from Chippewa. There's also no habitats onsite. We do have a decommissioning plan that promises to return the site to its natural state. We have a negative declaration from the town. And we have visual simulations of the property as well, visual renderings as well. And as you can see from the amount of material we've seen here, the town has put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into this and into its review with this project. So that's the location of it. That's existing conditions. And that's the proposal. These, so the wires are being moved underground except for the pole that comes in off of Cripple Bush. So it'll be underground along this existing access. And you can see the dotted line is your limits of disturbance. And there's the solar farm itself. There is, just so you know, there is a turnaround here for anybody needs to turn around. And that's it with an aerial view. So there is, oh, there are wildlife fencing, by the way, and there is buffers and vegetative buffers that surrounding the the facility as well. And that's what they're proposing with the northeast corner with the landscaping and the fencing. Two different tree types. And this is where they took the photo sims from to northeast and northwest of the property as well as to the southwest. But the one I'm going to show you is this one. This is the northeast one. That's existing conditions. Ah, there we go. There's existing conditions. That's without any landscaping. That's it at initial planting. And that's a five year look. So our only comment with respect to this is, we've made this comment many times is our storm order as the site's put into place. It's basically a monitoring, have somebody on site monitoring that there's no adverse changes to degrading that cause a stormwater runoff onto the properties that's outside of the what's proposed as part of their SWIP and their sediment erosion control plan.
I just wanted to note that there has been significant local opposition to the project. There were a number of protest letters or concerns that were raised that were sent to the county executive's office. We did get, I think, one email expressing concerns that we were copied on, maybe more than one. The comments generally were about visual issues, about issues associated with access on the on Cripple Bush Road and then about issues relative to the state historic district that are out there. One of the things that did change since the project was originally proposed, there were more than one, but the county DPW denied their access to Cripple Bush Road. It was a new access. So they went back and they used the existing access, which is a little bit better placed on the on the turn, although it's not the best. And so that they did, they did go back and do that. And that would be a monitor during construction.
Okay. Have a motion.
Except Conier.
Second. I'll second.
Okay. If you want to, okay, we have a motion and a second on the solar farm. Put on together. All those opposed?
Mike Calma, it's Mike Baden. I'm going to be a no vote on this.
Okay. All those abstaining? Okay. Moving on to Marlboro. Any recusals?
Okay, Bayside Mix Use Development. This is a proposal reviewed last time. We saw it was two thousand and eighteen, I believe. But just to jog everybody's memory. This, this is the parcel here down Marlboro. There you go. So this is the parcel in question that's going to be added to the the overlay district. This is where the site actually is for the residential component. Marlboro Middle School is here. If you remember, they have like a shared access with the proposed residential community. And they're going to be sharing the existing light with the elementary school for this proposal. So our advisory comments to them, like the last couple of times have been that just to remind them that they would need to, and they're well aware of it, to add this particular parcel to the to the overlay district. So there's no county impact with respect to following through on that.
Who moved it, please?
McLaughlin.
Thank you, Vince. And the second was Mr. Conier?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, Town of Ulster, any recusals?
Frank, if he's still here, should be.
I'm Chris, I recuse.
Thank you, Frank.
Alright, let me go to the aerial for you. This is north of the Quick Check in Lake Katrine. So this is the existing Quick Check right here. This parcel here and it wraps around over to here actually is where the Kia dealership is going. As you'll note, there's existing right in, right out access here and an existing sidewalk all along the frontage. So no new access is actually being proposed as a result of this proposal. They will use the existing light intersection at Grand Avenue to make left hand turns out of the property. And they'll have right and right out, now the existing point of access. Pretty pleased about that. Let me go to the site plan here. So it's an eighteen thousand, almost nineteen thousand square foot building. And as I said, it's consistent with previous county planning board recommendations and approvals. Just that this is in place. Lighting is good. Chippewa had no adverse impacts on it. This is existing site, as I told you, has the sidewalk. It has the the right and right out access and also has easements already in place to go back through the Quick Check. These are standard renderings and the building elevations of what Kia dealerships look like. Just make a comment to make sure that any signage conform, we didn't get the conformance of the standards of the zoning statute. That'll be one required mod. And the second one is street trees. Quick Check did had a very thoughtful job when they did their street trees along the front. We like to see that type of style tree continued along this frontage as well. And those are our two required mods.
What about fire department review?
It's good. They got, they got access all around the site, Vince.
Okay.
Just stand this one a bit. So we got two way traffic. If you're making a left out of the dealership, you go through the Quick Check to get to the light.
That's correct.
Okay.
And one of the things we wanted to say is we wanted to appreciate the Town of Ulster's efforts to essentially do access management at this location in this corridor.
Okay. Do we have a motion for this?
Own your motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed?
This is Link Jared, crosswalk at Grant Avenue. Is there going to be one identified?
As far as this plant, let me
I may already, I'm not sure.
Let me look at, let's go look at the aerial real quick.
There's no crosswalk across nine W.
No.
These are existing access points, Jer. We could, we could make, you want to make an advisory comment or what do you want to do, Jer?
I just want to know if there's, if there's going to ever be one there.
Oh, okay. Certainly not. This project hasn't proposed one. We could have that conversation with the with the Department of Transportation absent this review, if that's what you're asking us to do.
I do. I would.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
My guess is they would want to push it out to where the the light is.
It's going to be where the light is for sure. Absolutely.
Which wouldn't be under control of that parcel. So I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would have to be, it would have to be sidewalk to sidewalk too. So it would take the sidewalk to sidewalk in. I know what Jerry's talking about. I got it.
Yeah.
Not a bit. It's a great comment.
There's no sidewalks and there's no crosswalk across nine W.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Onto Woodstock. Any recusals?
Alright, this is all in Wittenburg. This is this parcel over here. Single family home. It's in a scenic overlay. Access will be from actually Jim's Road, which is over there. There's no county impact on this particular single family home.
Why is it here, Rob? Second, Mike Baden. Never mind.
Okay, we're doing both of these together. So it's a motion and a second.
Who moved it, by the way? I'm sorry I didn't catch that. Thank you, Vince.
Yeah, motion and second. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. That completes our agenda. References. Anything else for this? Well, Gus Boyd?
Dennis, I just wanted to make sure that you got our letter that Shangam will not be at next month's meeting because our meeting's the same day.
We did.
Okay, so Robert, don't sign off after the meeting's over with. I want to just talk to you one, two, three.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the board for your help on the Town of Lloyd. It was a lot of hard work. Thank you, everybody.
Well, I'll figure out how to do your background, Scott, and then we'll be happy. I have a motion to adjourn.
Scott McCarthy.
Thank you, Scott. Alright, everyone, stay safe.